We call this meeting to order where everyone stands for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, freedom, and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment's time reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and also for those who have passed away in our community. Thank you.
Roll call.
Mr. Schuster.
President.
Mr. McAndrew.
President.
Dr. Rothschild. Mr. Donahue.
Here.
Mr. Gahn.
At this time, I would like to make a motion to appoint Vice President Donahue as Presiding Officer of this public meeting and Temporary Chair of the Committee on Rules.
Second.
On the question. On the question, President Gahn had an unexpected family emergency which he had to attend to. Under the rules of counsel, in the absence of the counsel president, the council's vice president shall serve as the Presiding Officer. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and motion passes.
In the absence of Dr. Rothschild, I move to appoint Councilman Tom Schuster as Temporary Chair of the Committee of Community and Economic Development.
Second. On the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, and motion passes.
I would like to make a motion to take from table file of the Council Number 89, 2021.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor in a second to take from the table, file of the Council Number 89, 2021. This piece is being taken from the table and placed in Seventh Order for a final vote. This ordinance is the transfer of a liquor license. It had been tabled to allow for a public hearing to be held. On the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order. 3A. Correspondence received from Simplex Homes dated November 5, 2021 regarding payroll tax. 3B. Correspondence received from Department of Licensing, Inspections, and Permits dated November 9, 2021. 3C. Minutes of the Scranton Municipal Recreation Authority Board of Directors, meeting held October 7, 2021. 3D. Correspondence received from Pennsylvania Economy League dated October 20, 2021 regarding Act 47, Coordinator's Recommendation to the Secretary of Development, Department of Community and Economic Development for the City of Scranton. 3E. Correspondence received from City Treasurer for Portnoy Law Associates Limited, Comprehensive Status Report for Trash Fee Collection, 2021, as of November 9, 2021.
Are there any comments?
3F. Controller's Report for the Month Ending October 31, 2021.
Are there any comments on any of the third order items? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I have a quick one. So next Wednesday, November 24, from 5 to 7 p.m., it will be the Annual Times Tower Lighting and Fireworks at the Scranton Times Building. That's all I have.
I have two quick ones. Just a reminder that this week is the only full week in November, that garbage collection is on time every day. And also, the first annual DPW Thanksgiving Food Drive will continue this Saturday and Sunday from 9 to 5 each day at Naught Park across from the pool entrance. All donations will benefit families in our community through Little Sisters of the Poor. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Fourth order. Citizens' participation.
First on the sign-in sheet is Joan Hodeanitz.
What's the status of the 2020 audit?
We still have not received it.
Okay. I learned today that the police-fire and DPW union contracts are still in negotiation and possibility that they may not be resolved by the end of the year when they expire and may go into arbitration, which leads me to my unhappy conclusion that we're trying to prepare a 2022 operating budget without benefit of an audit and also without firm numbers for future union contracts when you must keep in mind that the majority of the operating budget is personnel costs. So I don't know how you get there from here. Another comment is, I downloaded the document and printed it out this morning, didn't have much time to look at it because I focused on PEL, but in my opinion, no insult intended, this document is not ready for prime time. There are numerous, from just an hour or two casual glancing through it, numerous errors. It screams for footnoting to explain obvious issues. Previous budgets had gone department by department explaining changes in funding and changes in revenue or expenses or staffing. This doesn't do that. There is at the end a list of the 13 proposed hires and a short description of what, why they're being hired. What you really need is a fully documented job description. One of the physicians is archivist in the clerk's office, and it consists of four words: modernize city document procedures or processes. You know, I mean, so you're going to pay somebody nearly $37,000. Are they going to digitize records? Are they going to retrieve information from the basement and sub-basement? I mean, what are they going to do? Why do we need them? You know, we're trying to commit to hire people, and I don't know that we have a firm vision of what they're going to do. And there should also be measurable standards that they meet. You want them to digitize records? How many do they do in a month or in a week? So on and so forth. So I was a little disappointed. I was also disappointed that I was the only member of the public, I think, that went to the PEL caucus this afternoon. And I hope people take the time to download the PEL document. It's only 20-some pages. The good news is we're coming out of distressed city status most likely. PEL has recommended that. The bad news is, you know, we shouldn't be popping champagne corks quite yet. You have a situation where city expenditures are increasing more than 2% every year, but we don't have an equivalent increase in revenues. Even if the county approves reassessment, reassessment won't take effect for another five-plus years. So Mr. Cross has recommended that between 2024 and 2026, we increase property tax millage by 20.6%, just to keep our heads above water. So, you know, we may be out of distressed status, but, you know, we certainly aren't on very firm ground five years down the road. With regard to 5C, the Rubicon Global Contract, if you can find out, it would be nice to know exactly how much money this contract is going to save the city. They talk about making, you know, having faster, more efficient recycling management. How does that translate into dollars? Thank you.
Yes, and that's something I'm sure we'll touch on on Thursday's work session with the DPW director and parks directors. Next up is Bob Bowles.
Bob Bowles, Scranton. I'm going to bring up something first off here, and I want to read it out a little. It's the rules of counsel. No person, including members of council, shall use their time during citizens' participation to personally insult or attack any individual. Name-calling, profanity, racial, irritating slurs, or any other behavior that is inconsistent with the purpose and intent of conducting official business shall not be permitted, including freedom of speech. I'm going to read an order that was back in '04 before the court, before Judge Mazzoni. It was filed, and basically it's a complaint and petition challenging the City of Scranton Resolution Number 80, 2002, passed on July 22, 2002, which in part amended Article 5, entitled Regulations in Council. In essence, Regulation Number 80 amended Article V, Section 1A, to limit citizen participation exclusively on items contained on council's agenda for the meeting. When regards to the petition for temporary injunctive relief, a hearing was conducted on August 9, 2002. By order dated September 9, 2002, this court granted Bowles and others preliminary injunctive relief. This court preliminarily enjoined the defendants from making the new resolution and further ordered. The parameters of public participation and any or comment shall continue to be guided by the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act, 65 PS 701. It's Article 5, Section 1B of the City Rules of Council Meetings and the City's Home Rule Charter. And other, the caption matter is still pending. There was other things that were filed. What this brings up is what happened with Mr. Morgan here last week. Gahan went on an attack on him while he was here participating in citizen petition. What it means when we come here for centuries, this is what forums were for, for the debate, to be able to speak, put your message out, what you feel or somebody should hear. You should not be curtailed or criticized or name-calling, as Mr. Gahan has done to me, and there's a federal suit against him. Mr. Morgan last week came here, and he was ruled out of order. Not ruled out of order when you're here addressing counsel and handling issues that you feel are there, and you're being dictated to that what you want to say you shouldn't say. So that's the issue I wanted to bring up tonight. The other part is, you need to remove the Biden signs. It's an embarrassment to all of us. They should have never been there. He has a street in Greenwich. That was more than sufficient. You need to go back to where we were. Keep in mind, Joe Biden has blood on his hands. He was involved in murdering men, women, seven children by incinerating them and then lying about it. It's an embarrassment. I mean, it's pathetic. This should be put on a referendum and let the people vote for the street signs. We should have a say in this. Now, five council members and the mayor. This is our city. You people are employed by us to follow our will as well, and to do what you did here is wrong. It didn't hurt people financially on Spruce Street. It's made a laughingstock of us as people across the interstates that aren't from this area and see what's going on. He left billions of dollars there so they could shoot at our people and kill them. He killed 13 of my fellow veterans. Many were Maine, came home for life, but you don't hear a word about it. So this is the people guy you're honoring, and it can't be. And one of the other issues I had here is with Jessica here. I've asked that she put behind her name by law identifying her as a physical therapist. She could call herself doctor.
But we've got our, I mean...
Pardon?
We've got our, there's no point personally attacking.
I'm not attacking, I'm simply saying something.
And I find it interesting that the one council person that you are always target is a female.
Attorney Hayes, I have a right to speak.
Yeah.
I brought this up in the past. Jessica is naming herself as doctor.
And she has every legal right to.
I have family members that are physicians, are MDs, surgeons. Also, I simply ask that she identify herself as a plastic surgeon, a surgeon, whatever she may be. She's a physical therapist.
She's earned the right to call herself doctor. You want to call yourself doctor, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles.
Yeah, she's earned every right to be called a doctor. She's recognized as a doctor in her field.
Mr. Hayes, I recognize her as a doctor. She could be called a doctor. I'm simply bringing up the issue.
You need new material.
That she needs to identify herself.
You're out of order.
What type of doctor? It's by law. You're an attorney, you should know.
You're out of order.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next up is Lee Morgan.
You know, I did pull up that case that Mr. Bowles is talking about. I stopped there, but I'd just like to say here tonight that, you know, the First Amendment states that Congress shall make no law bridging freedom of speech. Now, those laws cover state government and local government. And the sad part is that when you have hired a solicitor who doesn't understand the rights of citizens in this chamber, you have a real problem on your hands. And when you have a council president or council members in general that didn't object to the actions of the president, and you don't understand what freedom of speech is and what rights every American has, we have a real, very serious problem here. You know, tonight I sat and I listened to the mayor talk about some things, and one thing came to the forefront of my thoughts when she brought up the Scranton Redevelopment Authority. Study that someday and see what they did to the, I guess, you know, people of colors, neighborhoods in this city. They ripped them all down and used the power of government to cause, in my opinion, great harm to residents of this city, because what it did was it destroyed their neighborhoods. You know, we have to be very careful, the power that we harness in the name of government, because government is a very dangerous animal and can be used as a weapon. Now, it's time for the residents of this city to understand one thing, because somebody brought up the PEL. This city was never designed to come out of distress intact, in my opinion. Okay? It was designed to come out of distress bankrupt, devoid of all its assets, just like it has. And the only solution for the residents of this city is to rewrite the Home Rule Charter so that the city can't make a budget without an audit. So that what the government can do and what it can't do, okay? We talk about all these quality of life and everything else. Look, people have to be able to afford to live here, and the residents of this city have to realize that they have an obligation to participate and not to allow government to dictate to them how they're going to live their life in every aspect. They've got to not be servants of government. They have to be free people. You know, when we look at our government, our government wasn't given to us by the British or by any, by the Greeks or the Romans. That's not where our government came from. It came from the people that were here when our ancestors landed here. Look at Massachusetts, and look at how the son of the governor, a Massachusetts hooker, created Connecticut. And look at how the founders of this nation looked at the Native Americans who really set this country on its feet. It didn't come from Greece or Rome, because the people who came from Europe had no idea what freedom even was. They were serfs to the king. Okay? And that's why, when you look at our form of government, the people voted for it. It wasn't given to us by our government, because we learned something from the Native Americans who walked this land before our ancestors came here. And it's time to really reflect on that as a free people. And the people in this city have to realize one thing. We have to write a new charter, and we have to create a government that represents us, the people. And it's good to talk about money, and it's good to talk about borrowing, but look, it hasn't worked. And the government itself, the council members and the mayor, should support this and not force people to go out and get signatures, because as the people that are running this government, you should want to include people in the restructuring of this government so that this city can begin to grow again. Okay? You can't just bring poverty here and think you're going to create paradise. The people have to feel they're part of the system, and they have to contribute, and you have to help. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Ron Elman.
Ron Elman. I'm going to forego my usual unpleasant remarks tonight. I want to talk about a real dangerous part of my neighborhood. From about Parker Street to the Toyota dealer, North Main Avenue is a racetrack. There's cars 24/7 going 60, 80 miles an hour, and that's no exaggeration. At the corner of Wells, there's a slight curve. And they put in probably half dozen telephone poles in that very corner. Cars are going so fast. One of them went through two or three yards and hit a house a couple years ago. When you're on my side of the street, at Wells, the school bus picks up a bunch of little kids, children. Last year, I don't know what they did. They tore up the whole street. They told me they put a pipe under the North Main to the other side. But they tore up a sidewalk, which, you know, a sidewalk, six inches or so. Now it's just a little place they paved, and cars go down it often. I'm talking about where the sidewalk is, and the children are there. There needs to be a stop sign at the corner of Wells, but across the street's a big parking lot from the tent factory. But there's going to be another injury or something there. The way the children cross the street, they run like hell from the other side of the street. On my side of the street, where the curve is, sometimes the cars are going so fast, they clip a good section. You can see tire marks probably two feet off the road under the sidewalk. There used to be a sign there. They knocked it down last year. Right across the street was where Mr. Minicozal was killed last month by a speeding car. I don't know why there's no charges. He was standing about two feet from the sidewalk, and there's marks, there's orange marks there where he was standing. The car that hit him never put on its brakes. Its front wheel was just inches from the sidewalk, and it got hit in the, like, inside the headlight. The car didn't stop till it got almost a couple hundred feet up the street. I've talked to people about the speeding cars. They told me this is a county road. I phoned the county, and they said the city's responsible. This isn't a police matter. I see plenty of police cars, you know? It just needs to have some stop signs there, because it's a danger waiting to happen. The children, they just don't seem to observe traffic laws like they should be taught at school or something. And then we got all these immature imbeciles on their trail bikes and quads all hours of the day and night, and most of them don't have any lights. I see them go by the house when I'm walking my dog at 11 o'clock, 11:30. They're shooting up and down the street. We're going to have another tragedy before long. But the intersection of Wells, something got to be done, because the kids are all over the street in the morning. And it seems like the driver mentality just don't care. They don't slow down. A couple weeks ago, when they were tearing a house down, there was a man directing traffic. There had to be a half dozen people standing around watching. There's a car come through there 60, 70 miles an hour, and it hit a cat. With all these people, you know, they just, the driver just didn't care about anybody. Well, let's do something about the speeding cars. It's not the police. We need an unmarked car to do something. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elman. Mr. Waldenberg, can we check with the police department to see if they could take a look at that section of Main Avenue?
I will, Mr. Donahue.
Specifically Wells, the corner of Wells and Main.
I will. Thank you.
Next on the list is Dave Dobson.
Dave Dobson, resident of Scranton. Today, I wasn't able to get through to anybody, but I did call Mayor Page's office about these televisions, because it's going to become, it's going to become an issue eventually. You start walking around the courts. I take my doggy through the courts so he's not on somebody's front lawn, leaving a few gifts. And they're starting to pile up. Every block has one, and, you know, maybe if we get our Christmas gifts, it'll be two for every block, and it'll just go on and on. Another thing I noticed with recycling is that very few people are recycling cardboard in town. Maybe we could try and do something to encourage people. Cardboard could be ground up and bleached and turned into paper, you know? It's, but about a week or so ago, I saw, it must have been eight or nine boxes, significant size, sitting there waiting to be hauled off for the trash. Doesn't make any sense. On infrastructure, call your congressman. And our internet and telecom and so forth, television costs about $240 a month for a kind of, it's so-so lineup, you know? You don't even get HBO or anything like that. And here we're talking about handing $65 billion to the telecom industries to get internet out to the country. I would think that maybe with all the money they charge me, they could be possibly required to do it instead of, I'm not against it, but I certainly could use a lot less of a price. It's way in excess of my property taxes every year, by 250%, you know? So anyway, on a lot of this Green New Deal-type stuff, Michael Moore put out a film last year. It was called Planet of the Humans, and you can get it online. So it's interesting to check it out, where some of these things may not be the great
success that... There may be more energy in than out of windmills and stuff like that. It's just something to compare. And when we talk about taxes, once again, I'm the drummer boy here, 30%, 36% tax exempt. And I often sit down there, and I think, well, gee, if we had half of that, what would that do for swimming pools at Naog to repair them? A lot of these issues around town are just a total lack of infrastructure. It's just a lack of money. Jones scared the daylights out of me here, 20% in five years. I mean, nobody gets 20% increase in anything, and it's just a shame. For instance, one nonprofit here. Final things, if you go up to the top of Linden Street, there was a yard that they were storing some old stuff, and now it looks like it's totally defunct. I was through there, and there's nothing going on but a bunch of old concrete blocks and stuff laying around in a totally disheveled array. It's... Why does somebody like that have a nonprofit status in the first place if they're doing nothing with it? They should at least fork over with some of the taxes because we do need them. And people start to lose their house or something when they can't pay that anymore, and that's not right after a whole life of work. Thank you.
Thank you. That exhausts the signing sheet tonight. Would anyone else like to address counsel?
Tom Coyne Menucha. Members of counsel, first, I have an issue with 5C, the Rubicon contract. The data collected by Rubicon is not the city's property at the end, or the contract. It is considered proprietary information. The data should be owned by the city, and Rubicon be granted rights to use it. With ownership not with the city, it ties the city's hands to migrate to another vendor using the data collected and already paid for, or use the data to create a city-owned app. In the 5C attachment, page three, the cover sheet states, "Please refer to the comparison rubric," but none is attached. They go as far to show how evaluation scores are compiled in the document, but they do not provide that data as part of the review for counsel's approval. This is yet another example of the executive bidding, reviewing, and picking, and not presenting comparison data for a fair and impartial, independent review by city council and the public. We are presented only the data in favor of the preferred choice and not the whole data for informed consent. On the PEL report, it's nice in the budget we are seeing a zero increase for 2022, as the hope is for a pending tax change to increase revenue, a county assessment change in property tax to level the unfair burden by some municipalities by increasing it upwards for everyone. That is, except for the wealthy who can build and dispose of buildings and apartments that they can live in after 10 years and have no taxes. We have a 0% increase this year, but as noted, PEL marks a five-year expected increase need of 20.6%. I can't see how the two balance each other. In relation to the non-union pay increases on page 74, Social Security this year made a stunning cost of living jump, 5.9%. The average was 1.65% prior to that. 5.9 may seem a lot, but this year's budget proposes an average city non-union worker get an average increase of 17.5% this year. I have no idea what the assistant city tax collector did for $10,000, but what more do we expect from them with a 350% tax pay increase? Workers' Compensation Program Manager is up for a 22.3% increase. Even the new transformation specialist position gets an 8.5% increase. I would like to see if any position in the city is left unfilled. The money should not be allowed to transfer it about to others as an excuse it has been budgeted for that section. It should be mandated that all unfulfilled payroll positions in the budget shall have the unused payroll funds from the open positions required to be only assigned and paying back to city obligations and bonds. The raise was quoted as in part to put the city on a more balanced economic footing for hiring people who would bring value to the city. The problem is, this budget does not evaluate bringing people to the city. What this does is it gives a large increase to everyone, whether they're qualified or not, because they haven't been assessed whether or not they actually can do their job, whether or not they're qualified for their job, whether they have the experience for the job. And without that, handing them a raise does not help future people get in here. And the last thing is, the sheet that I presented is from page 74. And like a number of the documents that were presented to you, and this was almost in the last of the documents from the budget, the column I put in there was increased percent because all that is math, but it gives a clarity to how much the difference is between what it was and what it is in a percentage-wise. I don't understand why that clarity cannot be presented to members of counsel so they can make an informed choice. Thank you. And I'd just like to say, as soon as I got this salary adjustment, the first thing I did was do exactly what you provided to us.
I will say I did the same.
And it should have been done for you, and that's what an IT person does. It's a spreadsheet, and it's a formula, and it's done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address counsel? Ms. Jeffries?
Good evening. Norma Jeffries, Scranton resident. And I want to thank Mr. Waldenberg, if I pronounced your name correctly.
That's correct.
For putting the list of the work sessions in the paper and the program tonight. And I know that it was in the paper and everything, but it's good to see it in one spot in a nice, handy slip of paper. However, as I sat there tonight, and I listened to all the discussion about the budget with the mayor and Mrs. Sabriani, and I thought, I can't hear. And I know that there's an acoustics problem in here. So, you know, the thing that we sit here and listen and see the backs of their heads, and we can't understand and hear what they're saying, so we have to depend on the paper tomorrow to what's in the papers as to what was said tonight. I don't think it's fair to us, as we give up our time on this chilly, cold night, to come out here and sit. So I'm sitting there, and I'm thinking, it's a simple fix. Rearrange the room. Is there anything wrong with rearranging this room? To put that table, we'll spit over there and have the two gentlemen there sit facing you. Because if the sound is coming this way, then you can hear them, and we can hear them. Do they need this big table like this? I don't know. But it seems like a simple fix to rearrange the room, since it would be much more cost-effective to rearrange the furniture rather than putting in a new acoustic system. So, you know, tomorrow morning, my paper will be delivered to my door, and I'll be looking on page three. I think it is where they put the city council notes, to decipher and to read what was said here tonight. And like I said, as we sat here and listened on this chilly night where we could have sat home and listened to counsel on ECTV, we chose to come out here. And I, for one, did not and could not understand a lot of what was going on. I went online. I didn't print the budget, but I did look at some of the things. But what I read, I couldn't understand, as to whether they were discussing what my concerns were. So that's all I have to say tonight.
Thank you. And we are working on, you know, with the speakers and the acoustics. The problem with the setup is that the microphones are set up there, and there's no way of changing that. That's even a more expensive fix than just the acoustics.
And just a little desk here would work. They don't have to sit at the thing, is what I was thinking. Okay.
Thank you. But that is something that is going to go into the budget for next year. So hopefully, you know, in January and February, in January or February, we get this all figured out in there.
Okay, that sounds promising. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address counsel?
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Before we move on to fifth order, can I state something first?
Yes.
Okay. With regard to citizen participation tonight, I would like to say that I think it speaks volumes that on the two instances that Bob Bowles decided to use his time addressing counsel to levy personal tax against the sole female member of council were at meetings when that member of council was not present to defend herself if she chose to. We know that public officials subject themselves to public criticism. However, I know I speak for counsel when I say that we hope that Mr. Bowles's personal attacks on Dr. Rothschild will not have a chilling effect on others watching this meeting from seeking public office. They should consider the source of those attacks, and they could start by doing a search of our county's criminal docket if they want to consider that source. But I just think it's important that we, you know, that we address this ongoing obsession that Mr. Bowles seems to have with one of our members. So I just wanted to state that for the record.
Thank you. And I was actually going to address that in fifth order, but I could address it now. You know, I think Mr. Bowles's comments were ignorant. We're not... We call doctors doctors because they're doctors of medicine. A doctorate means you achieve a certain level of education in your field. There's doctors of education. First Lady of the United States is Dr. Jill Biden. She's a doctor of education. There's doctors of linguist literature. There's doctors of political science. You could go down the list. The title is... The title reflects the level of education that that person achieved, and Dr. Rothschild more than earned that title. And that's all I have to say on that.
Mr. Waldenberg?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. Shushid, do you have any comments or motions tonight?
Yeah, just two. So first, I did speak with Larry West some time ago, and we spoke about the Scranton Fire Department retirees. So I'm going to ask, I'll send an email over to you, Mr. Waldenberg, about the retirees, seeing which ones are at the cusp of possible retirement or eligible for retirement, to give us a little background information for when we decide on how we will vote on the safer grant. The other one is 1829 Rear Cedar Avenue. It's a request I put in for the last two weeks. I've been told nothing at this point in time has been done there, so just restating that address, and I'll send that over as well. That's all.
Mr. McAndrew, do you have any comments or motions tonight?
Nothing at this time.
Just briefly, just to touch on some of what Mrs. Hoda Wannett brought up, we are looking at the audit and looking at ways where we could strengthen the contract moving forward in terms of timing. I agree that we should have it already. I'm hoping that we have it by Thanksgiving. I'm being overly optimistic, but I'm hoping we have it by then as we move into passing our budget. In terms of the CBAs, I agree that, you know, we don't have them in the budget because we can't put them in the budget. We're legally required to pass our budget by December 15th, and we have to do it that way. I agree that it doesn't put us in the greatest position, and it maybe might not make our budget even close to being balanced, but it's something we need to figure out because we have legal requirements that we have to meet that aren't necessarily have to be met by the administration and the bargaining units in terms of negotiations. I'm the archivist. I agree that, you know, it's something that we need to move towards, but I think the first step there is bringing in a company to do, to backload, and to digitally archive everything going back. The city has certain requirements on how it keeps its records. Some things have to be kept for life. Some things only have to be kept for 30 years, 20 years. So I think we really need a company to sit there and go through all the paper we have in the basement and across the alley to really do a deep dive, and then get into an archivist to keep it going moving forward. But that's all I have for fifth order.
Mr. Waldenberg?
5B for introduction and ordinance authorizing the issuance of a tax and revenue anticipation note, series of 2022, in the principal amount not to exceed $10 million, providing for the dated date, interest rate, maturity date, redemption provisions, payment, and place of payment in respect of the note, accepting the proposal attached heretofore as Exhibit B from the financial institution named therein for the purchase of the note, naming a sinking fund depository paying agent, authorizing the proper officers of the city to execute and deliver the note and certain other documents and certificates in connection therewith, authorizing and directing the preparation, certification, and filing of the necessary documents with the Department of Community and Economic Development of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, setting forth a form of the note.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, I think the most important part about this is the fact that the interest rate is below 1%. There's a big difference in a 5% interest rate in terms of our TAN compared to an interest rate under 1%, especially when it covers one year. So I think that's an important point to make. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5C for introduction and ordinance authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract between the City of Scranton and Rubicon Global LLC to provide smart waste recycling data collection and operations management system for the Department of Public Work Solid Waste and Recycling Fleet.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I think there's going to be several questions that need to be brought up regarding this. I'll speak with Mr. Hayes about it before we get to final passage.
Yeah, I agree. I think we, you know, we need some more detail on this, and I will reach out to Tom Riembo to make sure he provides more detail when he comes in for his budget work session on Thursday.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5D for introduction and ordinance appropriating funds for the expenses of the city government for the period commencing on the first day of January 2022 to and including December 31st, 2022 by the adoption of the general city operating budget for the year 2022.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, I think as we move through this process, we go through our work sessions, there will be some amendments and additions, subtractions, whatever you want to call it from this budget. But I think, you know, we're going to introduce it tonight, and then we'll move through that process, and by December 15th, we have to pass the budget. So we will pass a budget. But this is the beginning of the process, and we'll work through it with the administration and amongst ourselves, and we'll get to a spot where we get this budget passed by December 15th. Anyone else? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5E for introduction, a resolution accepting a donation in the amount of $1,000 to the Scranton Fire Department to be placed in the special city services account as noted.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5V be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5F for introduction, a resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the City of Scranton to enter into an agreement with the Department of Homeland Security, FEMA, to accept the staffing for adequate fire and emergency response safer grant in the amount of $2,000,000. grant in the amount of $2,596,047.50 to be utilized by the Scranton Fire Department.
At this time, I'll entertain, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I'm going to vote to move this forward, but I, like I said, I spoke with the administration about a list of retirees that might help us to see what this, what this is going to look like moving into the future, to see if we could work through attrition to fill these positions and not see this money, you know, being added to the budget moving forward.
On the question, I have significant reservations about this, just because of the total cost that it adds to the city's legacy costs in year four. And it's my understanding that it can't be done through attrition. So, we have 138 firefighters today. We need to have 100. If we accept this for 10 positions, we're going to have to have 148 positions for three years, no matter what. We could have 35 firefighters retire during that time period, and we still have to stay at that 148. Then, when the grant runs out, it becomes either, do you furlough those 10, or do you keep them on? And I think that, especially given, you know, what we have on our, on our agenda from Pell, in terms of their calculations going out, that's very concerning to me. And I, but we'll work through it. I believe the fire chief and police chief are in next Tuesday for their work session, budget work session, so I'm sure that will be a topic then.
On the question, so I'm definitely moving this forward. I posed a couple of questions to Mr. West and Mayor Cognetti with regards to previous SAFE grants. Why was one sent back? So, I'd like to see three become six, become nine. I'd like to see this grant every three years. And I want to know why it hasn't. I was told that it was sent back one year, then I was also told that it was never renewed. So, why wasn't renewed? I know grants are tricky. I know if you don't send it in on time, you don't get it. I know if you don't fill it out correctly, you don't get it. So, my, my biggest question is, let's talk about moving this forward. Let's talk about having three years becoming, nine years becoming, or six years becoming nine years, and, and why, why not? So, I'm also waiting for more information, but definitely want to move this forward.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, file the council number 90, 2021, in ordinance, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the city of Scranton to enter into a lease agreement with the Deutsch Institute Applied Research Centers for the handicap for use of the premises known as Robinson Park, located at 98 Mountain Lake Road, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18505, for a three-year period commencing January 1, 2022, and ending December 31, 2024.
You've heard reading by title of Item 6A. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that Item 6A pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number 229, 2021, ratifying and approving the city of Scranton application for a peer grant from the Trust for Public Land, TPL, in the amount of $10,000 for a parks, trails, accessibility study, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept the grant, coordinate, and disperse the grant funds as appropriate.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As temporary chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of Item 7A.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B, previously tabled, file the council number 89, 2021, approving the intermunicipal transfer of a restaurant liquor license, R14696, currently owned by Michael A. Mecca II, and located at 224 Erie Street, Dunmore, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, 18510, to Galley Family Food Mart, Inc., The Food Mart, located at 801 Cedar Avenue, Scranton, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, 18505, as required by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board.
As temporary chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7B.
Second.
On the question, roll call?
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, 8A, file the council number 88, 2021, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract between the city of Scranton and Bedrock Technology, aka Keystone Technology Consulting, LLC, to provide information technology management services.
This piece of legislation is currently tabled. If there is no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned.